Please. Okay, I hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission meeting. Do we have any adjustments to the work session agenda? Hearing none, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Present.
Uh, I, I don't hear whoever's calling the roll.
All right, now I've got it now. I got my microphone on. Uh, so Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Schmunk.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Um, Chair Rhodes.
Present.
Vice Chair Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Salazar. Um. I, I see Commissioner Salazar on the list, but um. I haven't heard him or seen him actually respond.
Well, he'll pop in here. Um. Are we ready to call our agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm gonna call our first agenda item, which is the Performance Measures for Scenario Planning with Drew Larson. Thanks, Drew.
Certainly. Thank you, Chair. Uh, hi, Planning Commission. My name is, uh, Andrew Larson. I am the Senior Transportation Planner for the City of Springfield. And tonight, we are going to be discussing the, uh, Scenario Plan Performance Measures. Um. And so I'm, just before we dig in, I want to give you a quick overview of what the Scenario Plan is and the performance measures that we are bringing forth tonight, uh, asking for feedback. So I'm just gonna read from here, just so I don't miss anything. Um, so the Scenario Plan was first developed in 2015 in response to state legislation to help reduce transportation-related greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, the Scenario Plan evaluated scenarios, including a do-nothing approach, as well as identified a preferred scenario, which promotes walking, biking, public transit while reducing car use. The goal is to see how different strategies can help cut emissions while supporting vulnerable communities. So as part of the Climate Friendly, uh, and Equitable Community Rules, CFEC, uh, Springfield, Eugene, Coburg, and Lane County are required to update and implement the 2015 Scenario Plan. This includes creating performance measures and jurisdictional-specific targets to track our progress in reducing emissions. The work group, um, including Consultant Parametrics, ODOT, um, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, Eugene, Wayne County, Coburg, Springfield, have all worked over this past year to identify and recommend performance measures. Tonight, we're seeking Planning Commission feedback on the proposed measures to make sure that they are good fit for Springfield and easy to track. Uh, the main presentation tonight will be given by Ryan Farncombe, um, from the consulting firm Parametrics, who will walk us through the details of the proposed measures. We also have Brian Hurley from the Oregon Department of Transportation and Cody Myers, I hope, from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, here to answer any questions following the presentation. Um, some, some next steps, uh, before I hand it over. Uh, we will also be attending a council work session on December 2nd, seeking feedback from them as well. Uh, we will then take both the Planning Commission and city council input, refine the performance measures, and draft jurisdictional targets to formal, to be formally adopted by the Metropolitan Metropolitan Policy Committee, MPC. Our goal is to submit the updated Scenario Plan, uh, to the state by June 30th, 2025. Um, so that's pretty much the background. If you have any questions for me, real quick, before I turn it over to Ryan from Parametrics, welcome to entertain those now.
Uh.
Commissioner Schmunk? Uh, yeah, so I'm trying to get a sense of, uh, is this this scenario planning, is it going down a specific road and we're gonna make adjustments based, and based on where that's taking us? And no other scenario is considered?
So the Scenario Plan reviewed a number of scenarios, including a do-nothing, continue as we're approaching. Um, look. I apologize, I turned off.
I may have turned you off.
I'm not exactly, maybe it goes off on its own, not really sure. Um, so the Scenario Plan, back in 2015 or 2014, when it was adopted in 2015, looked at a number of scenarios. Continued down the same path, uh, that we're on today without implementing any policies from the Transportation System Plan and those types of things. And then looked at what the policies of the Transportation System Plan had in place and what that did for our greenhouse gas emissions. And ultimately, they landed on this preferred scenario, which goes above and beyond what the Transportation System Plan policies and goals have in mind to reach the targets set by the state legislation.
Give me a general sense of what that is. Yours, I don't know what's going on, yours went off again.
Keeps turning off. I apologize. Um, so I mean, it looks at programs, uh, so like looking at active transportation, building out our bicycle network, building out our walking network, um, promoting transit, connecting walking and biking to transit, um, working on programs to eliminate single occupancy vehicle trips while also focusing on, you know, our most disadvantaged communities or her historically underserved communities. So a number of the performance measures that Ryan will go over, look at how we are doing that or how we propose to do that. And.
Okay, so I get that, I mean, I get what he's gonna do, but um, what I'm wondering is, is if so ridership is, they're, they're bumping up against the ceiling. They can't get more people on buses. Is that accurate?
Um, I, I can't speak for LTD. I, I, I don't know.
So you can, you know, generally the transportation, you read this stuff, right? What, I mean, people not riding the bus, they won't increase. It's, it's, it's like a barrier. There's like a ceiling you can't get beyond. Is that right? No?
Uh, I, I would.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, is that i- if we're gonna move to other transportation options, s- single-vehicle occupancy, we're gonna build out this system and then we get there, we're not gonna have the infrastructure necessary to support that individual transportation need. Is that accurate, this road we're going down?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not quite understanding.
Okay, um. Trying to get people out of their cars, right? I, I, I mean, I don't mean you, I mean, the system's trying to get people out of their cars. Is that right?
Uh, it's looking to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips, yes.
Okay, so if in 50 years, you know, we have all electricity we need and there's no impact on the climate from our transportation, um, we won't have built out the infrastructure necessary to support that mode of transportation. Is that accurate?
Uh, I mean, there's a number of other, uh, city planning efforts. We're looking at, uh, Walk and Roll Springfield that's gonna look at um, a new bike ped master plan to create these types of things, uh, you know, new pedestrian connections, new biking walkways, those types of things. So we are looking to build that infrastructure as well.
Okay, but it's, again, it's, it's, there's a narrow focus here, right?
Uh, trying to, uh, reduce greenhouse gas emissions through a number of, of various.
We're assu- we're assuming that greenhouse gas emissions are gonna be a problem in 40 or 50 years.
Correct. I believe that is what the preferred scenario is.
And so we're putting all our money on one, on one, uh, scenario.
Uh, I mean, that scenario covers a, a multitude of options.
Um. Can I just interject real quick here? Um, Drew, uh, do you feel like the rest of your presentation may cover some of this stuff?
Yes, I believe Ryan's presentation will, will address most of these questions.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. So Ryan, you are a panelist. You can share your screen and do it, or we can share the presentation from here, but I'd have to advance the slides for you, so really up to you.
Um, I can share my screen, and first, can you all hear me? Okay, great. Um, and before I, um, so first, um, good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Farncombe. Uh, I'm with Parametrics based out of Portland. Also FYI, my, uh, power has been threatening to go off for the last hour, uh, so if I suddenly disappear, uh, which I hope doesn't happen, that's probably what happened. Um, and I'll rejoin by my phone. Um. But I'm the consultant team project manager, um, working with Brian, who I'll give the floor over to in just a second. Um, working on, as Drew said, uh, updating the preferred scenario that was adopted by the region in 2015 and looking at uh, performance measures and targets to track progress on it. Brian, I'll turn over to you for a sec.
Hello, thank you very much for having us this evening. Brian Hurley with the ODOT Climate Office. I am the ODOT Lead on this effort for the, uh, cen- Central Lane Scenario Planning.
Okay, let me pull up my screen here. Okay, are you all just making sure seeing that presentation?
I can see it, yes.
Okay, great. Um, so as we, as we go through here, uh, feel free to stop us throughout if you have, if you have questions. So, um, I think Drew already provided a good, um, a good bit of this, but we'll go over a little bit about what we're up to in this new phase of work. We'll talk about our, um, draft recommended performance measures, um, and targets, and then we'll talk about where all of this work is going in 2025. So, um, the reason we're here today is because, um, there are adopted greenhouse gas reduction targets um, that are part of OAR 660 4425. Um, and the, um, Lane County Region is ta- tasked with reducing greenhouse gases by 30% from transportation by 2050. And that's compared to a 2005 base year. Um, and so about a decade ago, um, when these targets were first talked about, uh, the region went through a scenario planning process to identify how it would meet the greenhouse gas reduction target, um, at that time. And so, um, at, with this new phase of work, we're taking a fresh look at that scenario plan to make sure it all still, uh, makes sense and reflects the policies and changes that have occurred in the last decade. And like I said, also, um, look at examining perform, or, uh, developing performance measures and targets. So at the end of the day, this is going to result in a refreshed scenario, um, which reflects current plans, right? Because it's a decade old, so a lot has changed in the last 10 years. It'll have performance measures and targets to track progress towards implementing the preferred scenario. Um, it'll include a report, which includes actions, um, and a reporting schedule. Um. And then, uh, each jurisdiction who's involved, which includes, um, Springfield, Eugene, Coburg, and, um, parts of Lane County that are within the urban area, um, will be charged with, uh, tracking progress towards those targets and periodic reporting. So the reporting requirements, uh, are in general, in every, um, every time the region updates its regional transportation plan, which is generally every four years, um, there will be a major report due, and this is all, um, just aside, this is all spelled out in the rules, um, that go along with the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rulemaking. Um, the major report will report on the status of the performance measures and progress towards the targets. Uh, and it'll also include discussion on how jurisdictions are, um, advancing towards the, the targets. Um, the major report will, um, we, the consultant team working with ODOT and DLCD are developing a report template. Um, so the consultant team, we are developing this major report the first time around. Um, but then they'll, the, the jurisdictions will have a report template to update, uh, as required in the future. In the intervening years, when we're not doing a, uh, major report, a minor report, which, um, is essentially a, a, a pretty short form, uh, is due each year with a very short narrative on progress towards these measures. So in terms of roles and responsibilities in all this, uh, Lane Council Government's LCOG is providing regional coordination and facilitation and as well as providing, uh, a lot of data where we need data for some of these measures. Um, a project management team, which is, uh, composed of jurisdictional staff, um, from each jurisdiction, has been participating in periodic meetings to help guide us as, as we go through this process. The MPC has met and discussed, uh, this project a couple of times and, and we have a few more touchpoints with them. But they are ultimately the, um, kind of decision-maker and will approve the final performance measures and targets, the updated implementation chapter. And then, uh, ODOT and, uh, Department of Land Conservation and Development, um, are funding this effort and also providing technical support and advice as we go through this. And actually, I'll pause here before I get deeper into the performance measures. Are there any questions about kind of, um, what we're up to? And I should also mention that in a couple of slides here, I do have some more details about the strategies in that preferred scenario.
I think if you could just get all the way through and then we could ask our questions, that would be just, thanks.
Will do. Okay, so, um, jurisdictions are responsible for reporting on, um, the performance measures that we are developing in collaboration with staff and, and all of you. Um. There's quite a bit of, um, flexibility in terms of the measures that the region adopts to track progress towards that preferred scenario. So there are no specific measures required, per se. Um, but obviously, we ideally want those performance measures aligned with the strategies in the preferred scenario. It also doesn't mean that every strategy, which there are a number of, uh, needs its own performance measures. Really, we're trying to get to a, a succinct list of, um, tangible and measurable measures, uh, that, uh, really aren't an onerous burden for anybody to track and actually do show how we are, um, making progress towards the preferred scenario aims. Um, so at this point in the project, working with, um, our jurisdictional staff partners, we've developed draft measures. And we are currently working on developing draft targets for these. And that's what I'm gonna get to here in just a second. Before we do though, um, and I won't read this all to you, um, but I did wanna put up here the, the strategies that, um, compose the preferred scenario. And as Drew alluded to, um, there are several different investment areas that comprise the, this, the preferred scenario. One of them is transit, and the strategies here are about supporting full implementation of the frequent transit network, stable funding, encouraging new development, uh, along those corridors where there is frequent transit, um, improving the rider experience and expanding service frequencies. Parking management, um, looks to allow developers greater flexibility in how they provide parking, uh, and potentially increase fees for long-term parking. Education and marketing investments are about, um, making sure that people know how to use the system and what's available to them in terms of transportation alternatives. So for example, expanding marketing programs, um, expanding car sharing, um, and supporting implementation of state-level transportation options programs. Um. The other handful of investment areas include active transportation, so, uh, essentially building out cycling and walking networks, um, implementing bike share in appropriate places, developing incentives for developers to construct high-quality, um, cycling and walking and rolling facilities, expanding safe routes to school. Um, in terms of fleets and fuels, there's no specific local strategy beyond going along with what's been adopted at, at the state and federal level. Um. Pricing, um, things like supporting transition-to-pay-as-you-drive insurance, and then support for increases in the state and local fu- fuel tax to, um, uh, support these investments. And then finally, in terms of the roadway system, um, the, the preferred scenario includes an approach to, uh, optimizing the roadways, that is, so making the best use of the pavement that's out there, so grant metering, access management and things like that, to make sure the roads we have operate as, as best they can. So that again is the kind of backdrop for us creating the performance measures. Um, and I mentioned a couple of these things already, but what are we looking at when we're developing performance measures? First of all, it needs to be measurable and quantifiable. Um, and we definitely wanna make sure that it uses readily available data. Um, all of this is in the interest of making sure that this is not an onerous exercise for our, uh, jurisdictional partners in their, um, uh, updating and reporting on these measures and making sure it's using stuff we already have on hand. Uh, we're also doing our best to align it with some of the performance measured work that like LCOG already does as part of the regional transportation plan. We also obviously wanna make sure that the rel, the, the measures are directly relevant to the outcome that's being monitored as part of the preferred scenario. And then finally, uh, we want to do our best to make sure that all of these measures are something that, um, everyone can understand what they mean. So again, we looked at existing performance measures that are already being tracked as part of the regional transportation plan, both, um, uh, DOT performance measures, um, and the performance measures established for other MPOs in the state through rulemaking, which all provided a good starting point for us. So here are our, um, draft performance measures, and, um, I can provide details on these if there, there are questions. Um, but on the right here, where it says CLSP categories, those are the uh, kind of investment areas that the performance measure is, is pointing to. Um, so active transportation, and I should also mention before I go these, through these, that, um, there are a few tweaks to these that are likely still to occur based on, um, uh, staff feedback from our, our jurisdictional PMT. Um. But, uh, from the top, we've got active transportation network completeness, which looks at, uh, as a measure of how complete the planned transportation, actual transportation network is in a given jurisdiction. Shared micro-mobility trips taken, that's a measure of, uh, how many trips are taken on things like bike share or scooter share. Um, access to jobs and services through active transportation looks at, uh, how easy it is to access, uh, employment on, on foot or, uh, uh, cycling or rolling. Mode share is, um, focused on how people, um, make their trips, uh, whether it's walking, rolling, taking the bus or driving. Household VMT looks at, um, the number of vehicle miles traveled per household, um, which is an indicator of, of how people are making their travel decisions. Level of transit service is a measure, um, that's based on, um, how much transit service is provided per capita in the region. Access to high-capacity transit looks at, uh, the density of population and jobs within proximity to high-capacity transit. High-capacity transit is things like, um, the MX system. Um, transit stops intersecting with pedestrian facilities, so that is looking at, uh, the completeness of the pedestrian network with relation to the transit network. Number of pa- parking stalls per person, um, is looking at parking supply in climate-friendly areas, which is a, uh, essentially a land-use designation that the jurisdictions are all working on in compliance with the CFPC rules. And then the final one is a measure of those, um, the success of those education and marketing programs, which looks at, uh, participation in employee and employer, um, group pass, uh, group transit pass programs. Um. It, it's also worth, uh, should also note that, um, there's, equity is an important consideration in all of this, and so for several of these measure, measures, there's an equity lens. Um, for example, um, access to high-capacity transit, the equity lens that we'll apply there is, is how does access to, uh, access to high-capacity transit compare to, for people, um, in underserved populations versus the general population. Um. These measures are all reviewed by the MPC most recently in August, and like I said, um, expected to be a few tweaks still as we go through this, but, uh, this is a good, our good starting list. So once we have the measures, we're also developing targets, and so these are what we're aiming for with each of these measures. And so the goal with these targets is that they are reasonably likely to, uh, achieve the, um, preferred scenario outcomes. Again, tracking back to that 30% greenhouse gas reduction by 2050. Um, and so that's kind of our next phase of work here that we'll be, uh, working with the jurisdictions on is, are those targets and making sure we get those right. So, um, as we get into the first part of next year, we'll have those targets, we'll have discussions with each of the jurisdictions to make sure we've got everything right, and we'll also, um, look to update the up implementation chapter for the, um, preferred scenario, which will include things like, um, uh, updated strategies for achieving the preferred scenario. So we're gonna continue this engagement with jurisdictions and the MPC, um, until, uh, we get towards the final um, product for all of this, which, uh, will happen later this spring in 2025. And I think that's the end of my spiel.
Is this, are we time for questions now? Okay, great. Uh, Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. So, um. I, I, I realized that a lot of the things that were being implemented, a lot of the things that, a lot of this we have to do. It's not, these weren't necessarily like things that we came up with on our own. These were things that, you know, a lot of this is getting handed down by the state. Maybe not all of it, but a lot of it. So what I'm wondering is, what is the strategy for communicating this to the community? Because I think that a lot of these things average citizens aren't aware of right now. And I think when we start implementing these things and they see parking low, parking reduced and um, a lot of other things, that's gonna be hard for them to understand. That's, and then they're gonna direct that towards the city when quite frankly, um, it's not necessarily all on the city. So I'm just curious what strategies we've looked at to communicate this effectively? Because it's not going to be something that we can say over a couple of weeks and hope everybody hears it. We're gonna have to roll this out over a period of time so people can have time to digest, uh, digest it, understand it, and prepare for it, because we're talking about changing the way, you know, people travel, and that's going to take some doing. So that's, that's what my concern is, is, is how are we going to prepare our community, um, for this from an educational standpoint and from a preparedness standpoint?
I'll, uh, I'll go first and also, uh, ask Brian to chime in too. Um, I think part of the, the good news here is that a lot of the strategies and the performance measures are capturing things that Springfield and others are already doing. Um, and so I think that, uh, is, is part of the story and, um, you know, the other thing I think it's worth noting is that, uh, we are not changing the preferred scenario that was adopted by the region in, in 2015. So really, this effort, I think, is about taking a fresh look at it and understanding how the region can make progress towards it. Uh, and to that end, I don't, don't think, uh, is anybody from LCOG on tonight? Um, I don't think Rachel's able to join us. Um, so LCOG is also, um, going to help lead, um, broader outreach that comes out of this, and I think part of the discussion is, um, what that outreach should look like, right? Knowing that we're not necessarily changing adopted policy, but we're just kind of putting a finer point on it. Brian, would you add anything?
Thank you, Ryan. I agree, that's a good summary. Um, in addition to that, I would say how we work with the, um, project management team to develop the implementation chapter and uh, present that information to the public is also important. Um, so that's something that we can continue to do. And then also, the other thought was that the reporting requirements are for DLCD, so yes, these are things that you that might not, these are things that you are required to do by the administrative rules, you know, that were developed by DLCD. But in meeting those rules, as Ryan mentioned, we are developing the performance measures based on what the City of Springfield is already doing. So hopefully, this is in line and you're, and you're just reporting on your existing work and not anything new. And then also to the individual pre, to the individual measures, as Ryan mentioned, we are still working to refine those measures and get them to the right place that works for everyone. So you may see a little bit of change in the way the measures like that parking one is represented. Excellent question. Thank you.
Commissioner Salazar?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, so I think the, in general, I think the performance measures really make sense, uh, Especially understanding that I think tracking those over time and communicating those to the wider public are going to be very helpful. Because those measures are always changing, whether it's because of a policy shift or because of consumer habits and changes, like people are changing their vehicle miles traveled per household, they're, they're changing their the, yeah, they're, they're changing the way they move around town just because of maybe their life choices or because the market shifts or gas goes up or whatever. So I think being able to track these and communicate these, I mean, we're, we're able to track them, but just being more systematic about tracking them and communicating to the public, I think will give the public a better sense of how we move around the, this area. And so I think those performance measures that were chosen are very helpful to, to track. I think they're very intuitive. In general, I think as these performance measures, I know that it's kind of like picking from a menu, it seems like. As we communicate those out to the public, to Commissioner Buck's point, I think using, making it as intuitive to the public as possible and not using jargon like shared micro mobility, like that's not something that's going to resonate with, I think ninety percent of the folks. Like we know what bike share is and we know what peace health bikes are. But like shared micro mobility is like a little too in the weeds for the general public. And at the same time, I think a better under, like if, I think like parking, I forget exactly what the measure is, but parking stalls per capita or what, like like a little more, I think tho- those are, those are items that kind of raise people's hackles. And it's like, oh, you're taking away our parking. But I think educating the public about like what that is and what that's measuring will be helpful as well. So, yeah, but thank you. I think this is great.
That's very helpful, Pete. That was very helpful. Thank you. You see myself and Ryan both taking notes.
Commissioner Schmuck?
Thank you. So I'm trying to, so this started in two thousand fifteen, but is there, can you, have you measured impact since then? Or do you, I mean, when do you expect to be able to measure impact? And what would that, how would you measure that?
So we are using, we're updating a scenario planning tool that basically shows us how these different policy actions are contributing towards the region's greenhouse gas reduction target. So part of our work right now is actually updating with the current state of things to understand how the regions progressed since we last looked at this in two thousand fifteen.
Okay, so, okay, so you've looked at the, at the progress. So how do you evaluate a scenario of what? So you, so you do that by counting tailpipes? Is that kind of how you do it?
It uses a variety of data sources, including outputs from the regional travel model, which is based on traffic counts as, as one of their inputs, yes.
Okay, traffic counts. Okay, so if an electric car goes by, how do you count that?
So the, the model also does incorporate the assumptions about changing fleet fuel mixture into the future.
Okay, and so does the, does the scenario assume that vehicles will be getting, becoming more electric and therefore less greenhouse gas emissions? And to what degree?
It, yes, it does take into account those future fuel assumptions. I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but I can assure you that it does incorporate the future fleet mix.
It does incorporate?
Yes, it does. The GHG targets are designed for to account for changes in what we call the fleet and fuel technology over time. So we do account for as more folks adopt EVs and we also account for changes in how electricity is generated. So all that is captured in the model and the rules, the administrative rules for the GHG target, it accounts for that. And so jurisdictions are actually only responsible for their share of of achieving the target is the best way to say that. We give you credit, we call it credit for those fleet, those fleet and fuel technology transfers over time.
Okay, but you can't, you can't guarantee that any, any positive impact from, from what we're doing, I, I guess, right? I mean, you don't have the data. Is that accurate?
To guarantee a positive impact over time, I'm not sure that I can guarantee, but we can show improvements or changes in trends over time. What we do is we forecast the emissions for the region out to twenty fifty. And depending on changes to local policies, as well as those statewide fleet and fuel technology that I mentioned, we will see changes in those trends. You'll either get closer towards your GHG target or further away.
Okay, well, let me switch gears just a little bit. But what kind of effort do you expect the city to provide? Or in terms of, you say that they're already capturing some of this information. So what is your sort of average city, twenty five thousand? How much you think, what kind of FTE do you have to devote to this type of thing, to, to, to satisfying this, this requirement?
Understood. Excellent question. In terms of satisfying the administrative rule requirements for the major and minor report, my take is that is very minimal. I cannot give you an FTE number. City staff can coordinate with DLCD on that, on an overall estimate. I know that the city has, I, I shouldn't say that. I believe the city has already completed the first minor report, so you should know about how long that took to complete. And the idea Ryan mentioned, we will have a template for the major report. And so the idea behind that is it makes it easy for jurisdictions to meet the requirements. You should be able to just open up the, in theory, you will be able to open up the report and update it for your current reporting year.
Okay, thank you.
So just to jump in, thanks, Brian. We did complete our minor report. And I would say on average, I think total, it was about eight hours of my work to complete the minor report. I'm thinking it was less, but being a little conservative, saying about eight hours to complete the mine.
So that was, that was because you had, you'd completed a major report at some point and you're just updating it?
So we have not actually done a major report yet. And I can't remember the exact timeframe on when that'll be due. But no, it's the, the ORAs, the administrative rules required us to start doing annual reports. And so looking at what we have done over the last year towards these efforts.
What kind of FTE do you expect over the next twelve months?
I mean, tracking this stuff, it's, as, as they noted, we're, we're doing a lot of this work already. And so the mechanisms are in place to move forward with doing these things. And so another minor report, I mean, I've done one. Hopefully it'll take a little bit less time even next year, you know, six hours.
And that's the full effort for, toward this?
For the reporting.
Okay, share with me what the rest of it is.
Well, I, I mean, as, as they noted, we are doing this work already. We're, you know, building out our biking and walking infrastructure per the transportation system plan. I mean, LTD is working towards better ridership every day. Parking management, it's not necessarily an issue yet in Springfield. But we've had, started having conversations. If you remember, we eliminated all parking mandates or vehicle parking mandates citywide. And so we're anticipating possibly some parking issues coming in the near future. I'm hoping not near future, but starting conversations with fire, police about enforcement, making sure that our roads aren't completely clogged with just vehicles as nobody puts on off-street parking anymore. I mean, these efforts are just kind of a continual effort of, or continuation of what we're pretty much already working towards.
Okay, and you're just, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions about this stuff. There were a lot of things in, in the strategies that sound like they cost money. And I was just wondering if there was any state funding for these things or if this is an unfunded state mandate?
Interesting question. In terms of I'm trying to think how to best phrase this and as an ODOT staff member, unfortunately DLCD is not here. I believe, yes, you could view this as an unfunded mandate to do the implementation side. That is something the city is responsible for. And then to that end, state agencies are providing you help to get there. So ODOT is providing help for the, we are providing funding and resources for the scenario planning, the scenario planning effort, excuse me. And then also part of the CFAC requirements will be updating for local transportation system plans. When that comes due, ODOT is also providing the funding for that effort.
Thanks. And I guess just one last question. You're talking about changing the price of long-term parking and I was wondering what is considered long-term parking in this scenario?
Yeah, and we, we've had a lot of discussion about the parking metric as part of the, the scenario plan. And you know, the other thing to recognize here is that regardless of whether, and, and the long-term parking was really meant to be about like people parking all day for work, for example, as opposed to like, you know, fifteen minutes pulling over to pop into a bakery and then leave again. So that's kind of the difference. We know the other thing we're, we recognize, right, is that the market will drive parking pricing. Which is, you know, why our measure, it looks as a little bit more focused on the supply of parking to understand how that is changing relative to the number of people in place.
Well, thanks. Commissioner Buck?
So I want to kind of make sure that we're, we're staying on focus on just how we're using the, the physical space that we have. But so not so much about the price on long-term parking, but when, if you're defining long-term parking based on people parking during the day, that wouldn't be a private lot that's owned by somebody else. What areas are you thinking about? Because there's, there's not really a ton of that street parking in Springfield. You know, typically there's not like a two-hour time limit or something like that. There's some city lots that are, but for the most part, there aren't limitations on parking. So I'm just curious, when we're thinking about long-term parking, we're thinking about cost for parking. That's not part of our reality. There's not really too many places that I can think of that I couldn't park for the day. Or that I would have to pay for that parking in Springfield. You know, in other jurisdictions, sure. But in Springfield, that's not really the case right now unless I'm not thinking of something. So when I kind of think about that definition of long-term parking, that's kind of everywhere right now. And so I'm just curious if, if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah, it's a fair point, Commissioner. And I think I go back to our, our draft measure, which is a slight, slightly different take on it, which is less focused on the cost of parking and more on on those climate-friendly area designated places. So the CFAs the city has or will be designating are the kind of basically downtowns of each city. And, and so looking at how the parking supply changes per capita over time, shows us how is, is, is what we think, an approach to looking at how effective other interventions are in terms of providing options for people, right? So if there are fewer parking spaces per capita and everything's still working well and there's still adequate parking, then that means more people are walking, more people are biking or taking the bus. And so that's, that's what that measure is looking at and less focused on the, the pricing piece, because you make a good point.
So I, I, I just the other side of that that I worry about is it also could mean less people are going downtown. Because if we're looking at a climate-friendly area of downtown and I'm considering, you know, just I'll use myself as example. I loved, I love going down and getting a pizza from Azaluna. But if the convenience, if it was made more difficult to do that, who's to say I wouldn't go to, wouldn't avoid that because of its location and, and do that? Because I mean, I think that it could mean that too. And, and so that's, that's just one piece in there. And there's not probably a great answer for that right now. I'm just putting in there that if we're designated in certain areas, it could mean that people tend to avoid those areas versus accessing them by foot and bike. It's just a thought I have.
That's a great thought. If I may, Ryan, I will also add that I'm looking through the preferred scenario and without diving into the details, because the model has hundreds of zones in there, but looking at the future cost for long-term parking, that is all in the first scenario, that's, looks like it's all in the city of Eugene. And Springfield, we have no changes from your currently adopted plans for long-term parking.
Thank you.
Excellent question. Thank you.
Chair, a quick question? Go ahead. Thank you. Thanks for the great presentation. Looking at two thousand fifteen preferred scenario strategies, page eleven. And I think rightly so, a lot of these strategies focus on incentives to incentivize something to happen. And I'm curious, you know, looking at for example, developer incentive, developer incentives for high-quality cycling, walking facilities. So how will that be? For example, if an incentive is offered, I understand you're going to be measuring whether, I assume someone took advantage of that incentive. How will progress, whether that incentive is working from year to year, when the analysis occurs, be measured? And how will you determine whether one's working or not?
Yeah, it's a great question. And this is a case where I think, I mentioned this at the start, is we're not necessarily proposing a performance measure for every strategy. Because that one would be pretty hard to track. Where I think we capture that is in the updated implementation chapter is providing a little bit more detail about perhaps what those incentives might actually be and how the city might implement them. But I don't think we would necessarily have a performance measure to track that specifically.
We seem like we may be running toward the end of questions. Are there any last questions with this presentation? Okay, well, seeing none, thank you all for coming and, and presenting to us. That was very detailed. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for the time. If you have any more questions, feel free to follow up with staff and they will direct them over to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you too, and thank you, Plan Commission. Have a great night.
I don't see us having enough time to start the fair housing training today. Does that jive with what the rest of us are thinking?
I think that's fine. You could take a break and we could reconvene at seven o'clock, if that's your preference.
Let's do it. I'm adjourning the work session. Okay. I hereby open the regular session of the Springfield Planning Commission. Uh, I think we've got all our same attendees, so we'll skip our roll call. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, uh. So are there any changes to the minutes from the November fifth meeting as published in the packet? Hearing none, uh, the November fifth minutes are approved. So let's move on to business from the audience. Uh, do we have any one in the audience?
Yes, we have several people here and online.
Okay. So, uh, we will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission. Not otherwise on our agenda tonight. Later in our meeting, there will be a public hearing with an opportunity to address the planning commission on specific topics. Of the proposed development code text amendments to campus industrial district. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute. Until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Let's start with, uh, people who are attending in person.
We have people that would like to, um, speak to the public hearing, but none for business for the audience right now, in the audience.
Do we have anyone, uh, online or joining by phone who wants to speak at this time?
We have someone online, but, um, they have not raised their hand for business from the audience, audience.
Okay, well, we will assume that all of our commentary is coming later. Um, so that brings us to our agenda item, the development code text amendment to campus industrial district. Rebecca.
Thank you, Chair Rhodes. Um, for the record, my name is Rebecca Dorman, um, here with the planning commission, um, as a contract attorney. This evening. Tonight's continued public hearing is for legislative land use decision. A legislative land use decision typically involves the adoption of new policy. That applies to a large area or group of people rather than the application of existing general standards to a single tract of land. The strict notice and process requirements that apply to quasi-judicial land use decisions do not apply to legislative land use decisions. A copy of the procedure for tonight's legislative hearing and copies of the staff report have been posted on Springfield Oregon Speaks dot org. The criteria for adoption of development code amendments are in Springfield Development Code, section five point six point one one five. Any person with an interest in the proposed code changes may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. Following the planning commission hearing, the commission will deliberate. And make a recommendation to adopt or not adopt the proposed amendments or to adopt the proposed amendments but with. Um, modifications or changes. The planning commission's recommendation will then be considered in a joint meeting. In public hearing before the Lane County Board of Commissioners and the Springfield City Council. Any comments submitted to the planning commission will be provided to the city council. Any comments submitted to the city too late for the planning commission to consider will be included in the record provided to the city council. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from the phone or online that are out of turn. Will not be part of the record. And now Chair Rhodes, it is appropriate to open the public hearing. And ask if any commissioner wishes to declare any potential or actual conflicts of interest regarding the proposed code amendments.
Thank you. Excuse me, sorry. Uh, so I'll now open the public hearing, uh, and. We'll start with a roll call of the commissioners for disclosures of any, um. Conflicts of interest.
All right, I'll start with you, Chair Rhodes. Any conflicts of interest?
Uh, no actual conflicts, uh, no ex parte contacts and, um. As usual, um, potential conflicts of interest as a Springfield land owner and a person doing. Business and housing in this community.
Vice Chair Buck.
Um, no actual, uh, bias or, uh, conflicts of interest or ex parte contact. Potential conflict of interest as a Springfield land owner and, um, an insurance agent who practices in the area.
Commissioner Salazar.
No potential conflicts of interest, no ex parte contacts and no bias.
Commissioner Thompson.
No conflicts of interest or ex parte contact or bias.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Uh, no conflicts of interest. Um, we'll disclose, I knew Kelly, um, Richardson forty years ago. He's one of the folks who's been testifying in this, uh, particular event, but no other conflicts, uh, if that's a conflict.
And Commissioner Weber.
Uh, no ex parte, uh, bias or conflict of interest. I am a property owner in Springfield.
Thank you. Um, so I believe we have a staff presentation. From, uh. She planning, Planner Andy Limberd. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, thanks Chair and Commissioners. Um, I'm going to be very brief this evening. Um, I did make a, a fairly lengthy presentation. Providing context, um, hopefully Commissioners have the opportunity to review the meeting materials from the prior session. I also wanted to address a couple of questions that were posed either in the public hearing or separately, uh, for benefit of the Commissioners. Um, and also the, um, attendees in the meeting tonight. Um, so there was a question at the last meeting about. Why can't this site be just zone commercial? Um, and the reason for that is, number one, the city would not support a site-specific standalone. Rezoning to community commercial because that, it opens it wide open. To any number of uses that are allowable in the commercial district, which includes used car lots, uh, mini storage. Not that that would take place on this site, but it basically opens the door to anything within that district. It also calls into question the city's economic opportunities analysis that was done. And that focused on target industries, um, family wage employment type sectors. Which includes the medical sector. And for that reason. The redesignation resulting to a medical services district for the LifePoint Hospital, which is in this same kind of vicinity. Was seen as on par with the type of development that would be found within a campus industrial district. It's self-contained, it's enclosed, it has an, it's an employment generator, it's, uh, in a campus setting. And it's in a target sector, which is medical services field. So that is the reason why. The LifePoint Hospital site, which is almost due south of this, uh, property, uh, was seen as. Um, and I guess an acceptable substitution for, um, a campus industrial site. Opening it up to, to community commercial, uh, could bring on any number of industries, uh, businesses. That have a wide range of potential impacts from traffic generation, uh, sewage. Uh, demands on electricity and water supply and that sort of thing. So all of those are not comparable and compatible with. Um, a campus industrial type of district. So to have a kind of an isolated spot zoning, uh, for community commercial. Um, could essentially open a can of worms, so to speak. Um, it would allow for the types of uses that the applicant is seeking, but it would also allow for. Um, a myriad other uses, um, that would not be desirable and have already been stated by respondents to be. Not desirable in that neighborhood. Uh, so that's the reason why that zoning was not, um. A viable avenue in the, in the, in the view of staff. Um, another question that came up was, um, whether the forty percent, um, area. It had been added back into the district as a kind of a limiting factor on the total area of campus industrial. That could be attributed to business parks, um, then was subsequently removed in another iteration of the applicant's. Um, proposed text amendments, um, in response, I believe, to. Um, the testimony provided by, um, respondents, um, I guess opposing the text amendments. Um, the last meeting, um. Interestingly, staff had initially surmised that providing a forty percent limitation. On the amount of area attributed to business parks would be seen as a measure to prevent a proliferation. Of business parks in this area, um, if it was deemed to be, um, too impactful or not desirable or. Um, you know. Uh, I guess opposed by some of the existing, um, businesses and property owners in that area. However, um, apparently the property owners and respondents, um. Were interested in possibly getting in on the action, so to speak, and not being the last ones that might be facing the forty percent cutoff. Uh, sometime in the future. Therefore, the applicant removed that, that limitation. Um, it was already gone from text, uh, the development code is not in there currently. The applicant proposed to reintroduce it as kind of basically a limiting factor. Um, and now they've removed it again in response to the testimony received from, um, respondents, which are adjacent property owners. And op- operators of another business park, um, in the, in the area. Uh, so that's the reason for that being removed. Um, there was a question, um, about whether the November fifteenth submittal, which was, um, provided. Um, through Springfield Oregon Speaks addressed the concerns of the respondents. That were provided at the public hearing meeting last time. Uh, I would suggest no, because we received additional testimony on Monday. Uh, yesterday, um, in response to the latest submittal from the, from the applicant objecting to that latest submittal. So. Um, it's, we're kind of circling around, um, and possibly narrowing down some of the issues, but we haven't got to that point yet. So in summary, um, staff's recommendation is to. Receive all testimony this evening, to close the public hearing. That will not close the public record because it still has yet to go before the city council and the board of commissioners. However, it provides a defined endpoint for the planning commission and staff to have a representative example of the proposed text. Based on all the testimony that's provided and allow for the commission to decide whether or not. Um, they support that as a recommendation moving forward. The public record will continue. Anything introduced after the public hearing is closed. Would be brought forward to the city council and board of commissioners at their review point, which is going to be in twenty twenty-five at some point. Um, the intent is to not continue to kind of chase the item, um, because. Staff would be preparing a report that would be brought back to you for December third to allow for commissioners to review it. And also staff to review all the testimony to be provided up to tonight, um, and then. Provide a, a report that addresses the issues, um, and can look at the proposed text amendments more thoroughly. And provide one rather than multiple versions of, um, the, uh, proposed text amendments. We have a couple from the applicant, we have some from respondents, uh, we have what originally was supported by staff. And so we have various iterations that need to be consolidated into one, um, cohesive and understandable. Set of amendments moving forward. And so that's what staff's recommendation is this evening. So. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, um, if there's any. And I know that the applicant has, um, a, a, a. Uh, presentation, uh, further to what's happened up until, I guess, today. And, um, I imagine that there's other respondents who'll be wanting to also testify too, so.
Jared did have a question. Uh, anything, uh, quick question. So I just had a chance to review the new testimony. From the applicant in response to opposition testimony submitted on November eighteenth. It was submitted today at one forty-one. Does that represent to your knowledge, and I'm sure that we'll discuss this, any sort of. Discussion amongst those different sides in this? So basically, did they come to an agreement based on? I'm looking at the, the comment, for example, and it says, underlying text is basically newly, newly added and so forth.
Um, I'll, I'll have the applicant respond to that, but my, my understanding is that is, this is the applicant's. Um, best attempt to incorporate both their original premise and, um, reasoning and rationale for making these text amendments. Along with the, I guess, major points of contention that have been identified from the respondents. And I believe they're very, they're pretty much identical, um, in their, um. Presentations from both Richardson and, and G Group or Justina, um, and their, their, um, council, legal council. Um, so I believe that the applicant, and they can make this statement to correct me if I'm wrong with that. This is their latest attempt to address those concerns. Um, but I don't know if there are any further concerns and they're prob- there may very well be because they're here to testify again. So. Um, I don't know what, um, if any, um, further concerns are maybe about the latest iteration.
Question here.
Go ahead.
So, um, under your proposal or, uh, you closed the hearing tonight. Does that, they still have an opportunity at the, a city council level, but does that reduce any flexibility for what might need to take place on? Either part? Um, I mean, do they lose sort of some, um, you know, ability to. Further refine it, um, or do you believe you can just do it tonight and get it done with?
I don't believe there's anything lost, um, because number one, that is, this is a recommendation and there could be other factors that come. Between tonight's or whenever the planning commission's decision is issued for a recommendation. And its presentation to city council and, uh, the, the board of commissioners. There may be other factors, there may be other information that weighs into further edits or further modifications that are then brought forward. Um, staff doesn't foresee anything like that, but there's always the opportunity for both the applicant or respondents. To recommend, and staff for that matter, to recommend further changes to it. So. In, in the interest of making this limited to three consecutive planning commission meetings, which is, um, I guess. Fairly lengthy for, you know, text amendments, um, not wanting to continue to chase. To get to perfection, we need to get something where we have substantively or substantially addressed the concerns. And not everyone may be happy with that, but we need to move forward. We can't continue to try to wordsmith every.
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. Um, one of the observations I kind of want to make here is that. Our job as the planning commission is to help facilitate. The best possible process for council to effectively make a decision. Um, the decision doesn't lot, doesn't rest with the planning commission. This was always going to go to city council for final approval. So our job is to help clarify what the issues are. And to help direct council to what they need, what they need to look at in order to make that deci- decision. And so what I hear staff saying is. We're, we, we ended last, last time hoping to have more time for. An agreement or a resolution, um, and, and in fact, that's the opposite of what's happened, um. Some, so further points have got rotten in, so we've actually kind of not clarified this and not moved towards. A, a direction, but it's a getting, it's a getting a, a little less murky. And so I think that what I'm, what I'm understanding from. Andy is, if we can close the record, then we can clarify what we have currently. And give our best recommendation to staff, identifying the major points in the code. Um, as, as they, as they're concerned by the, by the parties involved. And so. That's the, that's the piece that, um, I just kind of want to put out there that we need to be looking at is. How can we best support, um, both, not only the applicant and, and those opposed, but the, the council and having. Um, the best possible lens to resolve this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, if we don't have any other, uh, questions, I think I'd like to move on to, um. The commentary from the public. So this here says to open the public meeting again, but I think we've already had it open. So there's a commentary for the people who are going to speak. Please remember to keep yourself on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak and you're not physically in the audience, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. First, I'll call on the applicant to speak.
Hello, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Andre Phelps. I'm with Andre Phelps Law. My address is three seven five West Fourth Avenue, Suite two oh four, Eugene, Oregon. I'm here with Teresa Bisho of Bisho Consulting, and we represent the applicant in this matter. And here in the audience, we have Andy Carlisle and virtually, attending virtually, Ron White, who are Hoz group. So I think what we would just like to speak to a little bit tonight is that we have presented two pieces of testimony. Both have been in response to the public testimony that has come before this. We've attempted to incorporate what we could. There are still a couple of points that we are not in agreement on, and those are points that really are kind of the foundation of why we're here tonight and why we've made these amendment, these proposed amendments. So essentially, what it looks like is that we have a business park, we have a couple of business parks in the campus industrial district, and tenants, there's, there's change in tenancies, and each time that happens, the way the code's written, it's difficult to determine really what is allowed and what is not allowed in many circumstances. And so really, the two things that are still remaining here as a point is whether uses can serve the public and really if clinics can be allowed as a primary use. So let me just kind of get into, I forgot. I don't know if everyone can see that. There we go. Thank you. Can I? Maybe I'm hitting the wrong button. There we go. Okay. I think at the November five hearing, we talked quite a bit about the impetus, oops. There we go. Thank you. We went in depth about sort of the impetus for the code amendments, and I just touched on those again. The change in economic conditions, the trend towards remote work. There's also this, in this instance, you have the CI district that's really in proximity to the healthcare cluster. You have International Way that bisects it. It's a multimodal transportation. There is the MX that goes right through there. And I think that, that that's, we kind of understand, I hope everyone understands where we're coming from, but please ask us more questions. These amendments really focus on business parks, like I said before, that allows clinics. And in this latest iteration, we've attempted to address the concerns about clinics and that they wouldn't be allowing inadvertently for hospitals or some sort of urgent care, emergency care. So we have added limitations to clinics in this latest iteration, that it would only be outpatient care, so there would be no overnight stays, meals would not be provided, that sort of thing that constitutes inpatient care, and also addressing or limiting it to no emergency or urgent care. We also attempt to address the issue about not primarily serving the public, which has been a real difficulty in bringing in tenants, because it's difficult to identify what is primarily serving the public and what is not. And then importantly, there's been many questions about whether this changes the area, the character of the area, and we do not see that this appreciably changes the types or impacts of allowable uses, as Andy Limber just spoke to. These uses are all still inside, the area still has pedestrian amenities, there's not increased environmental impacts. Those are all kind of the tenants of the campus industrial district. Like I've said, we tried to address some of the public testimony. So as Andy mentioned earlier, we removed the forty percent gross acreage limitations on business parks, we added the limitations on clinics, we incorporated some minor changes to the definition of business park, and we were happy to see some clarifications on the language about permitted offices and educational facilities, which we incorporated. And then there were a few minor fixes that were also offered that we included. I just wanted to put up a list of the primary uses that we have included in the definition of business park. I don't, my opinion is that the first three here, including admin and professional office, including government offices, educational facilities, and the first list there, those are actually, the educational facilities is being reinstated from the old code, the pre-two thousand twenty-two code, and it's really that fourth one that's been an issue, the clinics, as I mentioned earlier. And that is the one that I think has been a problem. And I just wanted to touch on sort of the definition of clinics. In chapter six of the development code, it reads in part that it is a group of medical allied health professionals and alternative caregivers such as chiropractors that provide diagnosis, care, and treatment of persons primarily on an inpatient basis. Again, the reason why clinics are so important, it furthers the, the aim of the comp plan of allowing target industries, and these, the clinics would be in the proximity of this healthcare cluster. It does not constitute a medical services district, as Andy Limber discussed earlier. And again, there's these limitations on outpatient care and emergent and other care. The secondary uses you see here, these are all, for instance, the Hoz Business Park has approved retail and a restaurant in their, in their building. Other uses would be childcare center, bicycle pass, public utility facilities. And I also just want to touch on, sort of, get to a better understanding of what already the businesses are that are located in this area. So south of International Way, you see Trillium, Pacific Source headquarters, pathology consultants, you have the Riverbend Annex with a pharmacy, you have this newly rezoned site to medical services that allows for forty-two bed inpatient care. These are all just in the vicinity of the business park. And then north of International Way, you have general office space, Hoz Business Park, Richardson Sports, FedEx Mail Center, and then the newly approved Latter Day Saint When we get to the, excuse me, there we go. When we get to allowing business parks to serve the public, I spoke just briefly about the language that's in the code is ambiguous, it's really difficult to address. So I'm an attorney by choice, and I look at this language of primarily serve the public, and it's really difficult to ascertain exactly what that means. What does primarily mean? Does it mean that I can serve the public forty-nine percent of the time, twenty-five percent of the time, ten percent of the time? When we look at the public, are those, we can serve our members, our clients, but we can't just have people walk in the door? It's a really difficult standard to address here, and it's really caused problems in terms of obtaining tenants in the business park. So in addition to that, the, the, serving the public promotes this economic diversification. And we did include in this latest iteration that was offered by the, in the public testimony, testimony, some framework to make sure that the approval or alteration of business, of business parks has to go through the review process. So they can't just, these can't just be sort of brought in without some sort of attention to what's coming in. And finally, just to touch on it again, that, that these changes still retain the campus environment, continues to prohibit auto-oriented uses, you won't have any drive-throughs, you won't have any storage units, that sort of thing. So we feel that we're still maintaining this character of this area with these changes, that these are surgical changes that really only affect business parks. And we appreciate your time tonight, if you have any questions.
Do you want to take commissioner questions now or after all the testimony?
I think that while these ladies are sitting here, that it would be a good time to ask questions of them.
Yeah. Just a clarifying question. Currently, the occupancy, there is occupancy that does serve the public in the building. You know, you noted a restaurant, there's a coffee shop, those kinds of things that are open to the public currently with its current occupancy. Is that, is that correct? All right. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other commissioner questions? I can't see the dais. But it doesn't sound like we do. So hearing none for now. Let's get to our audience participation. And, and thank you for your presentation.
We have two individuals that would like to speak against the code amendments. So why don't we have Michael Gilardi and Ardell Wicks.
My name is Ardell Wicks, and I am the chief financial officer for Richardson Sports, located at five hundred International Way in Springfield. In addition to my responsibilities for the company, my financial responsibilities, I have responsibilities to oversee our human resource department and the well-being of our employees. We really appreciate the two-week delay in considering the text amendments for the Springfield Campus Industrial Zoning Code. During the past two weeks, we have met in person and communicated numerous times as a group, trying to seek and find things where we're common, have common beliefs and for the way the zone should go. Fortunately, we have found many areas where we agree as neighbors. For example, we all want to maintain the high-quality neighborhood that currently exists in the area. We also all want to have a strong viable business community in Springfield. We appreciate the changes that have been incorporated by the Hoz companies as a result of our discussions, and we look forward to a long-continued relationship as neighbors. However, unfortunately, during the process, we've also found that we disagree on a couple of things. And that mainly is how far we want to move our campus industrial area towards a no-limit public-facing medical and/or commercial-like zoned area. As I mentioned last time, one of the reasons Richardson Sports selected our current location ten years ago is that the campus industrial zoning provides a quiet, peaceful location for our four hundred employees to work and to conduct business. The unique restrictions in this property zone is what helped this neighborhood become the best business district in the Eugene-Springfield area. It's a great area to work in. Our employees enjoy the campus atmosphere and limited traffic flow, which allows for peaceful walks during lunch and breaks throughout the day. It also allows us to come and go from the business quick in a time-efficient manner. Essential to this environment is the type of businesses that are allowed in the area and the amount of traffic they produce. Currently, light manufacturing warehouses and corporate regional headquarters are allowed. These involve very little traffic and congestion during the day. Generally, everyone has one trip in and one trip out at the end of the day. This is what we bought into when we purchased our current facility. However, medical clinics, care centers, public-facing businesses, or governmental offices involve significantly more traffic and congestion, which creates a very different environment for this zone. Traffic congestion and where we are as a manufacturing entity fits into the community are just two of our concerns we have if this zone moves more to a full, public-facing environment. In our perfect world, we wouldn't make.
The three minutes are up. All right.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, I'm Mike Gilardi. I'll say briefly, I think the applicant is, you know, did a good job of describing the areas of disagreement, and that's basically around whether clinics and medical facilities should be a primary use of the zone and the extent to which the uses in the zone can serve, you know, sort of, serve the public as retail-type uses. We have basically two competing proposals in terms of the language. There's Hoz's, which I think is their third proposal now, and then you have the proposal that you received from us and from G Group. G Group's document is the same as our document in terms of the actual code. As Ardell said, we just, we don't think that clinics should be a primary use in the zone. And we, what we've proposed is that they should be a secondary use, and that only the secondary uses should be able to, to serve the public as a, as a general matter. I think Mr. Limber made an important point earlier when he noted that Hoz had tried to rezone to commercial use, which is basically the gateway mall zone. What they didn't try to do is rezone to the medical zone, which is what Peace Health did in the neighborhood. So that option is presumably available to them. They've chosen not to do that because they want to have their cake and eat it too, in terms of the scope of uses they can have. Understand why they would do that for their own business, but we don't think that's what's best for the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Before we move to questions, do we have any other members of the public that are looking to speak?
There is someone online, but their hand is not up. So if they would like to speak, please raise your hand. I don't see anybody raising their hand online.
Thank you. Do we have commissioner questions for these two presenters? Okay. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I, I guess where I'm, where I'm kind of looking at this is, there, a lot of the building currently. there, a lot of the building currently is vacant. There are public serving entities in there. You know, coffee shop, restaurant, those kinds of things. And so the, the goal try, being trying to attract more more occupancy, whatever nature in there, the applicant, that's, that's the goal here is to fill up, fill up the space. And I, and I guess where I'm struggling with what you guys are presenting is, you know, the comments, unlimited medical access, which my understanding is that's not what we're talking about here because it wouldn't include hospitals and those kinds of things. And also, you know, there's, there's already existing public facing, face, facing businesses there. And so I'm curious, I'm trying to understand what it is. You know, since those things are already present. If, if a chiropractor were in there and there were people coming in and out of the business. I'm, I'm not understanding the impact that you're seeing that, is it just a frequency? Is it just, is it just, you're afraid that there's going to be more people on campus and, and that's the issue? That's, that's kind of where I'm struggling because a lot of the things, there is some limited limitation on, on what this code would allow in terms of medical use because it's, it's not a hospital. But also we already have public facing restaurants and, and the coffee shop there now. So if you could just kind of clarify for me that piece, I, I would appreciate it.
Sure, Commissioner Buck, I, I think the key point here is that the rules that, that the applicant is proposing affected the entire zone. They don't just affect their property. They would allow properties across the zone to be able to have a broader scope of uses and more of a public presence, more traffic, more, more activity in general. And we don't think that the proposal has adequately planned for that.
Gotcha.
Policy reasons why you would want to keep it as a primarily light industrial zone. The city has made that policy decision. As recently as the new city comprehensive plan says explicitly that the campus industrial zone is primarily for light industrial uses and corporate headquarters. So we think there's good policy reasons to limit uses, the decisions the city's already made. And we think there are, there are legal reasons why the, the, the uses need to be limited. Or at least they need to be limited without, in the absence of greater analysis that hasn't been done in this case.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to the applicant's opportunity for rebuttal.
Thank you for this and thank you again. Again, my name is Andre Phelps with Andre Phelps Law. 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 204. I just want to touch on a few things real quickly that I didn't mention earlier that I did mention in the November five hearing. My, the applicants did hire a traffic engineer and did an analysis, a TPR analysis. And that is available in the November, from the November five hearing. I also wanted to mention that again, I appreciate Commissioner Buck's question. This is not offering a no limits medical space. That's not what this proposal is for. These are just offices and clinics that are related to doctors' offices, similar to what you see in the area, around the area. So I also wanted to point out, this is not, these are not competing applications. This is our application that we worked on for several months with the city staff and city council. And we, we've worked Smith this, we have worked very hard on this and we paid and not in substantial fee to have this application here. We've worked, we've tried to incorporate what we can and make these changes. That's why there's been some back and forth. But these are not competing applications. So we, we have this application and we're trying to just sort of improve the economic diversity of this area that really could. It's a great area for this, for what we're proposing. And to the question of why medical, rezoned to medical is not on the table. If you can imagine, the reason why the area that, that parcel that was rezoned for the Peace Health Rehabilitation Center is because that was empty, that lot was empty. So what you can build when you have that is a building that fits medical services. We do not have that. Business parks that are there cannot just turn into medical services. They would have to be replaced. And so that is also not what's, we are asking for. And I think, oh, I just wanted to mention one other thing. So this idea that this is light industrial, the temple, the Latter Day Saint Temple that was just recently approved and is currently being built. That came into the zone because as, as allowing 30,000 patrons of the Latter Day Saints, they're pulling from, from their, they're pulling from the central Oregon, the Willamette Valley and the Oregon coast. Their hours of operation were estimated to be between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. That was approved with a traffic memo. We have done a full analysis to look at how the effects of these code amendments, how they would look in that area. So we hope you will consider all of these and we really appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of city staff and the applicant and the speakers from the public. But do any commissioners have any follow-up questions for any of those folks before we wrap up here?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get a feeling, currently in this zone, there's a fair amount of vacant land or is it all? I mean, but can you talk, do you know the percentage of vacant land in the area?
I don't know. I know that G Group does own one parcel. And then I believe Lane County just purchased, or is in the process of purchasing another parcel.
So the, so, so your proposal, you, you're trying to get this building filled. What was the, the two buildings, what were they created for? Office, office space, one time in, one time out?
They were approved for corporate headquarters with secondary uses of restaurant and retail.
So, okay, and then, but if the proposal is passed, then potentially all the vacant land and could become clinic offices and that type of thing. I'm just trying to understand the impact. I mean, that seems to be the issue is, is how much public facing, i.e., you know, four or five trips through a day for a given office or?
Yeah, so I think that staff could probably better answer your question about how much of that is vacant. From what I know, there are two parcels that are vacant and one is slated for future use through Lane County.
Okay, I just, can you give me a feeling for what you think? The amount of traffic, so be a significant amount more traffic for the, as an office building or less for an office building than it would be for, say, a clinic, if that, the structures became clinics for individual doctors or practices?
For the vacant, for the vacant land?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, no, for your buildings.
Oh, for our building. That is what the traffic analysis looked at, basically worst case scenario. Although we might claim that it's not a worst case scenario, but yes, that's what the traffic analysis looked at. If our building was, I think, 100% medical offices, clinics, so.
As opposed to the office that it was built for?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Okay, so hearing none. I'm going to follow the recommendation that we had at the beginning of our meeting. The Planning Commission's public hearing is now closed. Any further testimony will be provided to the elected officials. Given the testimony submitted yesterday and provided this evening, I would like to give staff a chance to analyze the testimony and determine if they have any recommended changes to the proposed code amendments or the findings in the staff report. We will therefore wait until December 3rd to finalize our recommendation. Is there any direction the commissioners would like to provide to staff at this time? Okay, well, hearing none. Let's move on to business from the Planning Commission. Are there any reports of council actions? Hearing none. How about other business from the Planning Commission? Or business from the Development and Public Works Department?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager. And I would like to introduce two people who are in the audience tonight. Based on the council interviews for planning commissioners, they have been selected to be brought back to council for appointment at the December 2nd meeting. So we have Morgan Driggs and Pat Greenwell. So they will be our new commissioners coming on board. We are inviting them to your next meeting. And as, at the next meeting, we will have an appreciation for Commissioner Salazar, who is wrapping up his term with his last meeting next month. And then we are also inviting back Alan Stout, who resigned earlier this year. And he said he would hopefully come. And we can also appreciate Commissioner Buck, who is finishing up his term and is going to go for another one. So we will have a regular meeting, a meeting of the Committee for Citizen Involvement. And in between that, we'll have a little bit of a, an appreciation and informal gathering. So just wanting to let you know who your colleagues will soon be. And that's it.
Thanks, Sandy. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the Planning Commission regular meeting.